And if you don't have any changes or recommendations, March the 7th, this will be our official formal application. David's here to go over our prioritization. Any questions that you have about any part of the application this morning is time to address. Thank you.
All right. I have a question. Okay, you have 20 rows on here and that's a cost of 44 million road dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay. How will we be determined which is part of which is when we run out of $7 million of work, let's spend first thing we can tell? How does that be determined?
The first, uh, David can add any other question.
The text on requirement is that you're the highest priority project to go to one on the list. So we'll do the first one, then we'll move to the second one, the third one until we're out. It's missing one there. Yeah, the two gray rows are not, those are just example rows, so the black boxes are the ones that start the actual list. So this is a prioritization that Ronnie and Mike contributed to pretty heavily because they're the ones out there on the roads. And I supplemented that with some estimating costs. Obviously, this is a list that goes to text on so that we can get our money from the TIP, the Transportation and Infrastructure Fund. And right now, it's at least seven million, it could be more.
So if I understand this right, then kind of 3.6 will be first, and then 199, and then 182, then we're above 6 million. So we're not going to do 211, we're going to drop down to one.
We could do part of 211, or if we spend less money than what's on the planned list here, we could stretch apart. And I think there's enough money budget-wise in these numbers. They all include a 20% contingency at this point. So there's a possibility that we could spend about 100% less than what's shown here. And we don't want to be low going into text on because we're basically telling them this is what we want to spend on road. And if we can spend less, that's great for the county. But if it costs more, we don't want to be arguing with text on about effectively why we might not be putting up more money on any one project. So it's a planned procedure for asking for money, getting them to allow us to go do what we need to do.
How many of these roads have already had some of our bond money spent on?
Yeah, I think only six. Just 326. And it's getting so much traffic, they're working on to go back there. Now, there's one thing I should point out. We've used costing information that we know we are already getting. We know what it costs to bring limestone into the county. So we're pretty comfortable with the pricing that we're getting. And the pricing that's set up in the list is based on that. So budgets should be pretty good. We're turning in pricing today, next week basically. And we won't be able to spend this money until they authorize us. Otherwise, we can't ask for reimbursement. We won't get authorization until about June 1st. Might be before that, but somewhere in there. And if you want to hire out a contractor to do this work, any part of it, it's going to take two to three months to go through a plan, drawing process, and repair process. So we may not be able to start a contractor procured project until September or October. So we're trying to outguess what we need to do in October today. So there's some allowances for going in and doing some work on these roads ahead of time to keep them open, which is trafficable, while we're waiting on authorization and everything else to get replaced so we can actually start construction. So I just want to make sure you all understand, that's how we've set this up so that we can get it done later in the year.
We already have a question. We're anticipating paying $7 million per year, right?
Right now, it's $7,163,000.
$7,163,000. How many miles of road, based on your priorities, can you lay down?
Well, that's a good question. The answer is that the roads on this list are some of the most heavily trafficked roads in the county. And so they're going to need to be built up in the heaviest fashion of all the roads in the county. What that translates to is they're going to need to have the most money per mile spent. And so most of these are coming in about $400,000 to $500,000 per mile.
Looking about 14 miles.
Something like that, 15 miles would be appropriate. And hopefully, a little less than that, and hopefully, you'll get money than that.
About 3% of the county.
I doubt, that's right, I doubt we'll get to 20 miles. Thank you.
And what we're doing is we're going to try using the majority of the county's equipment and air training that costs. That way, we could have more money to expand the road. So basically, we're going to go back in there and try doing all ditch work, everything in that scenario that we can in order to cut costs.
Right. Mike's talking about the strategy of having the county get in and stand culverts if we need to replace culverts. Things that we can do so that the roadway guys can go out and do roadway work. And we're not having to complicate things with having different trades out there at one time. It'll be a little more efficient that way. Any other questions?
I have a genuine concern, and I appreciate everything on that. I really do. And I realize that the oil and gas industry is the driving force behind 1747. There's no doubt about it, they are the steering wheel. And so consequently, the roads that are getting all the attention and the money by the county or on what your forces to use them on is money that is prequited by the oilfield traffic. It's trucks, it's heavy trafficing roads. All of our money's going to go there, all of our resources for the county are going to go there. And we are going to be working to try to put the road together for the oil and gas industry. They're going to go back in, they're going to tear it up again, and we're going to continue to go back in and repair it again. So all of our efforts as a county is to service the oil and gas industry. On the contrary, when you look at our road and bridge budget, we have very little money in there for material. I think it's maybe one one and a half billion dollars allocated for material in our county to service all of our other roads that our citizens went on. They get totally neglected. And so when it rains, as the women are sitting there saying, they can't get up and down their road when it rains. We have so much money in this county right now. DeWitt County allocated $16 million. When you look at the pie chart of their county, the majority of the funds even over beyond their general fund is going toward working for their road and the ridge and trying to get their citizens of their county to be able to get up and down their roads. We're the ones suffering, and yet all the money and work, which I do appreciate, is going to service the oil and gas industry. And I realize that it has to be done. But as commissioners of precincts and serving our citizens, you can't neglect the general citizenry with such a small amount of money to try to service our roads and expect that all of us have to pay taxes for all of these years, lots and lots of taxes, out in our precincts. And we're, you know, it's just neglected. It gets no new material. Ours hasn't been shredded in hardly two or three years. So, I mean, if you're going to do it, then we've got the money, we've got the opportunity to try to do something now. If we don't do it now, we'll never do it. And if you're not going to do it, as I've seen neighbor after neighbor after neighbor starting to shred their own roads, you know, if the citizens are going to have to start doing it or looking for ways, putting material on it ourselves so we don't wash, pour it out every time we go up and down the road, which is what's happening, we've got to be safe too. It's not just about the oil and gas industry. So although I do appreciate 1747, and I realize the funds have to go there, you're going to have to, as servants of our county look beyond the 14 miles of road that you're going to address with these funds, it's going to have to be a broader scope than that. And you're going to have to look about assessing and giving more funds to try to look at the whole county and where people need service. Your citizens live here, and we've got to be able to get in and out of our roads or not, whether we have local traffic or not. We've paid taxes for a long time.
We spent two and a half billion dollars on the foundation of that courthouse and a million on the program. Couldn't have a billion dollars in, you know, who's at them? You've got to be careful. You've got to be careful.
I will try to add some part of that. We have a road administrator who wouldn't miss it, people working on it.
You should have fired him long time ago.
And he wouldn't miss it. Commissioner tried to tell him to quit his budget. Hopefully, we have road administrators who wouldn't miss it.
You need to talk to him. But you brought up a lot of good issues to talk about. I'd like to address a couple of them. And I'm not slighting anything you're trying to say because it's important. And, you know, with almost 900 miles in this county, we're just scratching the surface with this money, obviously. So one of the things that we can talk about strategy-wise was, is get contractors to do the part that we can't do as a part of our regular work so that we can have our regular people doing some of the things that you mentioned. So there has been some thought about how we would undertake this in order to stay on top of the roads where there may not be quite as much flow of traffic, but we do have residents that pass the roads. So we did at least talk about it. Now, one of the beauties of 1747, and you had to do that in order to get the money, was we had to create a terrace. And the terrace is county-wide in this county. And it's going to start generating additional amounts that can go to road bridges. So there will be some money that's designated for Mike to be able to use next year. That money would start coming in about 10 months. So there is a little bit of hope, you know, down the road to have some more money going that way. Of course, we'll have to go back to the legislature and ask them for funding again for some more appropriation for 1747. We've got some money to do. Our county has some money. We don't always have to go to legislature for money. What we're asking is that they take some of the money and use it on the roads and write that. And one more thing I wanted to say is, you know, unlike everybody else, I'd like all different tax breaks. But that's conflicting with the idea that we can spend some money on the roads. So that's a pull and tug that we have to wrestle. And I'm not making excuses for the commissioners, I'm just saying those are decisions that need to be made on board so we get some money spent on roads.
That was brought to their attention when they did the budget, lowered the tax rate.
David, you commented that the money from the turrets can go to county roads. It's shallow.
No, I'm sorry, did I say that?
Yes.
Just here, Mark.
It has to go to road bridge funds.
One of the biggest problems this county has since its county's corporate arose, one of the biggest problems we have the commissioner's court to build Tracy. Not me going to the commissioner's court, it's not a county road, it's just not a priority road. Laid off on the even Jeffrey Allen, it's not totally fair because even though he did not put in a proper budget for material, didn't have a plan to do anything, commissioner's court still provides oversight. They could have acted where he did not provide guidance, more specific guidance where they didn't. I mean, it's still a function of the county commissioner's court. I live on a county road. I suffer to do that at least twice a year. Tracy does probably at least twice a year. It's bad out there. Any oil companies would care less whether they tear those roads up or not. I don't care how much money we put into it, they're not held responsible, they're not held accountable by anybody. And I think that's part of the fault of this, of the county. It's an election. Could you hear a lot more about road?
On another note, as far as the budget and what was put in, not offending or offending any current or former road administrator. But the commissioner's court does not have to abide by what's requested. They could have always allocated more money for road repairs.
Well, that's what I'm trying, my point is, he works for you. He does what you say. Like he goes on that road. And that's the attitude you have. And you're all elected by people in the precinct who listen there. Any other questions, David?
I'll give everybody a chance to vote.
I have to get one other question. Beyond 1747 and the roads you have allocated, do we have a long-term plan? I mean, beyond getting, using our 7 million, or if we get beyond the 7 million, have you been contracted or is that part of your job, to give us a five or 10-year scope as where we can say, we're going to do 100 miles of road a year at a time. We're going to do this, and your road, this is the roads that you're going to get done this year. I mean, because nobody, I've lived here 25, 26 years, and there's never been a plan, ever.
I'd like to say not yet. That's a good idea, it really is. And for us, just in the past couple of months, we've been, we've had our blinders on and been just basically trying to get this money from text on. It hasn't really been much time to think about something like that. We've just now started talking about how we're going to approach the construction for the rest of the year. And at some point, we're going to need to start looking at what the turrets can develop for the county and start to look at budgets for other roads as well. So I think at some point, it'd be fair to say that we get a couple of years out on our thinking. But as far as going five years, we could do it, I just don't know how accurate a five-year guess would be, so. Other than what we have. It would be better that we have, right?
You know, I would like to say this, I think it's the first time, as long as I know, that any of these roads have been, there's been a true assessment done of the roads. I don't think any commissioner in the past has ever gone on their road and did a true assessment. And this year, it was the first time we did. Ronnie and I, we did a bunch of roads, I think Pete did a little bit, I'm sure they did too. But first time we went actually, I mean, people actually went out and did a true assessment, looked at the width, the rideaways. And there's, quite frankly, there's some rideaways that you can question right now because it seemed like people, every time they build a fence on the road, kind of inch bridge on the county side and start losing drainage or something like that. But those, they have to be addressed later on. But first time in a long time drainage, ordinance were done. There's a lot of things that have been put into place now that we never had before. And I agree with you all, it's, we need a five-year, a ten-year plan. But then again, come budget time, Mike, I know for sure is going to be coming back, coming to the court with some ideas or some things that he's going to want and need to fulfill that goal. And if we don't do it, we're right back to where we started from. So, now, there are some things that are in the works, you just take the time to get there. We just can't go overnight.
Chevy, I'd like to take that one step further. I really appreciate some of your comments. And with 1747, there's absolutely no guarantee that 1747 will be in existence two years from now. But there's a lot of hope, there's a lot of talk in Austin, that this is not a one-shot thing. There's real talk, and I have actual written comments from senators who are saying that it is not their intent for this to be a two-year project. It's their intent for it to carry on. So we're very hopeful that two years from now, we'll go back to the legislature and it will be continued. And one of the reasons David and I put our list together, Pete made a real good point, we're asking for $44 million, and that's just going to scratch the surface. And we want to be able to go to the legislature two years from now and say, look, we told you two years ago, this is what we needed just to get started. We have that document, so we can go to them and make our case much stronger. Thank you.
There was two other questions, Captain, Mr. Busken. Mr. Busken, I was just going to say, the, when we went to the unit system, there is a provision in the unit system that the commissioner's court, together with the road administrator, is to prepare a five-year and a ten-year, and I believe there might be a one-year, if you'd like to help me come inside. There's a requirement that the commission do that. That would, I would like to say.
I'll be helping Mike this summer with budgeting that's going on, I'll be able to support them.
It needs to be done, because they did a requirement. Does he have a question?
Well, I'm traveling the road, supporting a small company for 35 years. And it was hard for me to tell someone, I can't pick your phone because I can't travel down the county road. We're fortunate that it hasn't rained in a while, but when it goes to raining, I mean, we're unfortunate that it hasn't rained, but when it goes to raining, we're going to be in bad shape. You can't get a phone company for dinner. You can't, you can get there on a highway, but the way the electric lines and the phone lines go through the back road, you're not going to be able to get a lot of places when it starts raining.
Let me also call it on that. We have changed the quality of the material we're putting down. We are actually using limestone. Back then, it was molten quartz peat, it wouldn't even pass the P.I., you know, 25 cents a yard, you know, whatever it was. And now, we pay a good dollar for some good material. It's going to take a while, but we are putting it down. We are making progress out there, and the bond money is actually the best part that I've ever seen. And I do live on a county road, and I just like everybody else, you know? And eight years ago, my residence was supposed to gotten paved, but it didn't. And I told Pete when I got hired, that's the first thing I'm going to do, take my road. I just did. I figured that'd make them smile. But anyway, yeah, that's where I'm at, and I know what it's like, you know, so.
Well, thank you, David. And you can go to your neighboring counties and see that. I mean, they implemented the unit system over 20 years ago. They implemented a plan, and little by little and slowly, they have topped all of their roads. So it just makes the county more desirable all the way around. I mean, we're blessed with the Eagle Ford Shell. You would have never in a million years thought that would have ever occurred and happened for us. But irregardless, a lot of the neighboring counties who have paved roads, it makes your land more valuable, it makes your county more attractive to being, it is just all the way around. When you have a good infrastructure and more positive thing for your county, and if we don't do it now, when we are so blessed with the funds, when will we ever do it?
All right, I don't think it's necessary, but I, if you all think it is, I'll make a motion to support this action, 1747.
No, we need an action to, to pull it on them. Can you say the second all the favors?
I don't support that.
And opposed, no? No, it's your turn. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Apologize if this item took so long. I usually try not to let it take that long, but because it was concerning the roads, I went ahead and let everyone ban everyone's talk. And another thing, all what Shelby mentioned about a commissioner never have gotten anything, never did anything like on the width of the roads, the position of the roads, the culverts on the roads. I had that when it turned into the unit system, and I handed that over to the road administrator. So I, being with assistance, with, together with Mr. Wagner, Hilber Wagner, we did that. We took care of all, exactly what he mentioned, we had that. I had it in place when the road bridge, I mean, when it went to the different thing, to the unit system.
Okay, with that said, let's go ahead and move on off to item number 15, discuss, consider act, instruct parts county road administrator to, I have a matter against it, more than mine. I got designated road bond and revise selection of bond roads to reflect need of residents to be served. Bus routes and special needs, needs residents, parts county road administrator shall, shall report recommendations by next scheduled meeting of Orange County Commissioners.
I'll put that on there. One reason is that Mike and I were talking one day, as we mentioned, there was one bond road that was designated bond road that was like the bridge to nowhere. It had nobody on that road. So why in the heck do we want to spend good money on a road that nobody's on? So I asked Mike to, and after Ms. Idler was here the other day and some other people, I asked Mike to, if he would look at evaluating the road bond roads based on the need of the residents, the bus routes, and the various special needs people who live in the county that need to have a good road so EMS and anybody else can get to them if they needed to. And that's not just in my precinct, but in all precincts. And Mike was in agreement, but I just wanted it to be out here to pre-often discuss and for Mike to make a comment on it. But it's trying to spend our money more widely and more efficiently is what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, because we went up there, a good example, County Road 141, it's five miles. We've got two miles to a flat, and the rest of it is nothing, nothing, nothing. I don't know what the.
That's all we spoke about?
Yeah. I don't know what the criteria was back then. But what we need to do is put it to where, County Road 148, residents, what did you say, 13 residents on it? Now, that's a road that needs it, but we're putting it out here where nobody drives.
Doesn't make sense.
No. And you can blade it, and you come back, and you can tell maybe a couple of cars went through because you still got the stuff on it and blade it. So it's like, let's take this money and put it to where the residents are. I don't know the criteria or whatever it was, we did, we don't hit it, but it's just something that I have to blade it, and then see if we can do something about it. Y'all are the ones that's authorized switching it, and I can get a list of roads, you know, for y'all approval and say, you know, the thing is, I don't want to be in one county, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be the others. You can go to the certain, and that's just what we're looking at. And if we get your approval, I like to say, I still don't look like here, but there's a lot of roads that go out there to the middle of nowhere, and they get some lives in here on there, and they'll be fine. I'd like to move that to where there's residents.
That's more logical.
Well, it's going to cut the dust. I'd like to make the point that we just go ahead and instruct the county road administrator to come back at the next scheduled meeting to, to, with the provision of revised roads for the bond, for road bond programs.
Can I make a second all the favors? Say aye. Aye. And opposed? No? No, it's your turn. Thanks, Mike. We went to item number 16. Let's discuss, consider act, the cleaning of 200 these caliber by contracting and professional service, all to be determined. Bye.
Hi. We apparently are having some issues with our building being cleaned, and because I would like to discuss the personnel, I would like to go to executive session.
Well, what personnel are you going to?
Cleaning personnel, the staff.
Now, it's her here, being that it's, being that it's, should she be here or not? We're considering going to an executive session on a personnel issue. But without her, without her being here, her being able to say that she wants it, or him or her, I'm sorry, she or him, that wants it in public for an executive session, I think they have that right too. I may be making a mistake here.
But she's not making any.
Right, that's why I said him or her.
You have the right to be here if they're asking.
It's the staff in general has been told to not come clean our building, so.
That's the only, I'm sorry, but I just have, I don't want to do.
Okay, but I'll.
No, 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 we can, I mean, we can go to executive session, I just don't want to sit in here as the judge today. I don't want to make a mistake here and do something wrong. So her's not here, but we have our ex-county attorney, so I'm asking looking to him for some information. Excuse me?
He's still be job guy. But if you want to go to executive session, you need to be in general.
No, I think.
Situation.
You can go.
I know you've got that interview, but not exactly correct. And we're all factored, why don't we just discuss the problem?
I don't have an issue with discussing, I was just on behalf of the employee.
I'm opposed to unless all parties involved be discussed here.
Well, I can, I have a lot on the agenda that I want to discuss, and I can discuss it in open court.
It's a couple of.
Yeah. The only thing that I want to say, and I'm not trying to make trouble, but it doesn't say anything about personnel, it just, that item says. And I am going to discuss why I want a professional cleaning desk. And that's why, I was going to give the explanation of why I wanted. Okay. I didn't, I didn't.
I don't need to do that in the executive session, because we'll be talking about personnel.
Okay, then I will, I will, no, I'll, our building needs to be cleaned. There was a meeting last week, Friday, with the personnel that was to clean the meeting, I mean, to clean the building. Pete told me I was not allowed to come to that meeting. It's discussing our office, it's not being cleaned. The general services told they didn't have to come clean our building, so we need something done.
Alongside from that, we are fixing to pay a couple of bills for over $18,000 of repairs and renovations that have been done to our building. And cleaning is an imperative duty that needs to be done to keep the building in good repair.
So if we're going to allow the employees of the county to decide what job they want to do or not do, that's fine, go ahead. But our building needs to be cleaned, it hasn't been cleaned. It's not beneath me or anybody else in my building to clean our own toilet. We will do that, but we have staff hired specifically to do that, and they were told not to do that, so.
Told by me?
The judge. The judge.
Brenda, you have a question.
My concern, the floors are slick because they have, somebody's gonna fall.
And we have, and it's timed down, pink carpet to come in and clean because all the construction and the stuff is complete.
They're completing the construction?
Yes.
All of it?
The restrooms are, the restrooms are done.
Cleaned once, since they finished.
That's what pink carpet's gonna do.
But then we also need day to day.
Day to day.
Well, that's just janitors' trouble.
I agree.
That's what there are.
Exactly.
This guy's telling the guy to be here, he's building, ain't the supervisor.
On this agenda, Adam, I know that we, the one we're talking about now is getting sort of like nineteen, but when we're talking about a professional service on a weekly basis, that's after it's been cleaned once, like you have on that one nineteen.
Because we're not being cleaned, so we, somebody should come clean it.
So, Zane, he's in charge of cleaning people, right?
Yeah, he was hired as the supervisor.
Zane, you got something to say about or address that?
Yeah, I have some of this. First off, we've got seventy-eight hours custodial staff taking care of thirty thousand square feet and grounds, grounds, that's way other staff are off the stuff, so we need part-time work in. There's gotta be a definition between maintaining and cleaning because basically the amount of hours we have is maintaining, it's not cleaning. I feel like this building itself, by itself, needs a full staff, or at least one person full-time all the way. Their building needs at least, I would say, sixteen hours a week. And I got one, one, everybody, I don't like to mention names. He pays, pays care of ground people and trash, that's, that's all he needs to be doing. That's the plan. You have one other tenant taking care of thirty thousand square feet, doing all the buildings, dusting, cleaning, sweeping and mopping. And most of you can tell it doesn't get done enough, that's not, that's thirty-eight hours a week to pull that off. I like to see anybody doing it. I'm out there taking care of those maintenance issues, so I'm trying, I'm trying to pitch up forty years of the good. Uh, person in hand decided to quit. I would like, I don't know what's going on in the tax office, but...
Is she here?
I don't know, I don't know what's going on. Let's say annex one, okay, as a whole, okay, let me put it that way, sorry. Uh, the cleaning person in question there, flat out refused to go and quit. I was given the choice of having nobody or her not going over there. Kill, we could resolve this with a part-time person to fill in. Uh, that's what I would like to have, one more part-time person to fill in with the annex. And then also, if we do manage to get one more part-time person, I've worked with me and Pete were discussing it somewhere between sixteen and twenty-four hours a week that would be responsible mainly for that building. The trash pickup will be still done by the outside custodial. Also, I would like to, once we do this, one person over there deal with the custodial, not five or six, not five or six people saying, "You go do this, you go do this and do this." And nobody for sure not yelling at staff or boss or public in here, because that's what I'm hearing.
Okay, I have never yelled at her. And Zane, and Zane and I have talked and Zane has been very great, Frank, and the part I'm working is me.
Well...
She claims it's me, that I, I mean to her, I do to her, whatever. If I ever was that way to her, I sincerely apologize, but I don't think anybody can... Because I get free mouth in Commissioners Court, y'all know that, that's me. But to staff, I do not, whenever they come in or clean my room, into my trash, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Always comes out of my mouth. We tried to resolve that problem last week, Friday, and I was not allowed to come to that meeting. That's why he's gone here. I don't want to air the dirty laundry on someone who can't defend themselves, but I want to have that person lie about things that I am not doing.
Well, if that person in general already been quit by then.
And that person should have been said, "Thank you for your service and not been begging to come back because we are not getting the cleaning that we need done." If she can go to road and bridge two days a week in this building, the other days we can get pulled from ours, why? We all have given her things to do that when they come in, I put the cleaning on, there were this, as director, to do some things and Luanne has outside what she normally did, but it was like wipe the baseboard, that's when they got through with the construction. There was a spill in the refrigerator, we cleaned the refrigerator, but there was a spill on the floor. Please make sure that gets done. I have never, never been yelled at, never, never.
Well, it's true, you're building this up, you...
It's not, thank you.
And honestly, the road, and he knows this, I had my concerns about the road bridge. I thought they were already way more on their plate between the two annexes. For one person, he's taking care of all of them, dusting, sweeping and mopping for these two buildings? One person on a part-time basis is not, it's not, it's not cleaning, okay?
Part-time, twenty-nine hours.
It's just, it's just trying to maintain, that's all it is, it's not cleaning.
And sometimes these need to move more than this needs to move.
Well, that's true, but I, I think that goes all the way around the county myself.
I had spoken to Pete about it too and, well, we kind of, I mean, maybe, maybe we do need more help. I'm sure we do.
I will give you an example. He, he come just to courthouse, has six custodials just to the courthouse. Lord of County Buildings, Sam, Patricia, y'all have nine taking care of their county buildings.
But that's not just cleaning, though, is it?
I mean, we're way, if you want, you gotta decide if you want to maintain or if you want to clean. That's really what you gotta decide, maintain or if you want these buildings to stay clean. I mean, we're talking time and time to wipe down building, wipe down walls, wipe down baseboard, polish stainless steel, you want it cleaned.
I told my toilets didn't seem clean and my floor swept, is that too much to ask of somebody? And I run a daycare, I've run a daycare for over twenty years, I have three full-time staff. If one of them tells me, "I'm not changing that dirty diaper," there's the door. So, if they don't want to do their job and they're hard to do, there's the door. And that's what it falls down to.
Well, I think our custodial employees right now are hired to clean, not to maintain. Zane, you were brought on board to help with the maintenance.
They asked to do a lot more than just clean.
I can tell you, 200 East Calvert would not need sixteen hours a week for cleaning.
Probably not. I think, I think he needs it right now, but then, I'm also looking as an extra little part-time person because we gotta take into consideration vacation days, holiday, uh...
But there needs to be a schedule.
Person that in question was out to sit for a week in December. puts the whole shooting match behind you, you're down to one.
But all you can do is tell us, "Hey, if you're not gonna have coverage today and I'm in between the ten ladies in our building, we'll make sure it gets cleaned."
But there needs to be a schedule established and duties established. As by, as by motion, the feet need to move more than the mouth and...
I agree with her.
Wait, 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 I want to finish saying something. There are things being said back to people in this building that go on in that building that are far from the truth. I was informed this week, which irritates me to no end, that I said something disrespectful about the sheriff's department as an entirety, as well as the sheriff and the chief deputy. Nothing ever came out of my mouth like that and repetition like that, trying to stir trouble, dissension among the troops, it's happening and it needs to stop. And that comes down to you, Zane, not to them, because you're the supervisor.
But he could have ruled as the supervisor.
I understand that.
But you're trying to vigil the janitorial staff and that's across, I've been in the county four months and that's across the...
I understand that, but when it starts stepping on my toes...
That's the rumors talking about me on Walmart, like people that, like people not associated with it. That apparently came from y'all, so we don't want to go down this road. I, I leave it to myself, but since you're bringing up the talking, that's what I'm bringing up. I keep it to myself. Because you know what, that appears to be the door on the early...
It's just that one time, because the way that the air conditioning ducts need to be cleaned or walls need to wipe down, we're gonna take that, one time thing, yes.
But that's number nineteen.
Nineteen, that's what we're...
Number one, she's a human resources officer. This is your human resources officer problem. They have a problem with a chief, can't have a problem with employee. Can't adjutant or teacher even be getting involved in it, that's her job. And person must be unhappy here, probably play, there's the door. And then she can advertise for people, get everything we need. And he needs extra number of people, the human resources officer should be helping you get those people.
But I don't have the money to do this, that's a problem. But let me back that up.
I understand. But I've been calling over that I have to wait, we're basically be gonna wait for this next fiscal year before we're gonna...
Right.
But there's gotta get you...
We have our staff that can do it.
But you have, you know, there's gotta, if county has money, give them the archer, find out how, there's gotta be way to fund this.
Not emergency, it's because you have the staff.
I'm just saying there's gotta be a way.
Actually, that would not be the auditor's job, Maurice, that would be the job of Commissioners Court.
Well, there's gotta be a way to fund this, the problem is, you got the wrong people involved in, who's gonna clean, who's not gonna clean, where they're gonna clean. She's a human resources officer, he's the manager of the custodial here and Commissioners Court in the operations that is out of their, they're out of their element. It's not their job, it's her job. And she should be given her job and Pete and the judge need to get out of there.
Okay, so we're not gonna get anywhere, obviously.
Yeah, we're, yeah, exactly, we're not gonna get anywhere.
Zane, how many people do you need?
That was a point I was gonna get to right now, with all due respect. Uh, we're gonna, we're not gonna get anywhere right now, I can see that already.
Well, it's not, I agree with you. It's gonna be a budget issue.
And I would, we could talk to Zane about that, but if he's saying that one courthouse has six people and one courthouse has nine people and we have two, because I know Zane's busy doing...
We got seven-eight hours of custodial staff, that's what we have, seven-eight hours.
We're gonna have to really look at it and, we're gonna need more help, I mean, that's...
But as of right now, we need to allocate the allowable times where our building at least gets three hours a week.
Yes, we do, so we need to give it some time there. I've been trying to talk to someone.
You have no...
Well, no, among the current staff.
We have everything here, so it's kinda like a courthouse.
They can a lot of appropriate hours. The bottom line is, is there's, there's too much cronyism going on. You're gonna be better served kind of budget time is to contract this stuff out to a cleaning company that doesn't worry about the gossip and who's saying what about water, who, you know? You contract it out, you don't have to pay the insurance, you don't have to pay the, and get involved in all this. Just contact the service to come in and clean it. And then they'll know what's gonna be done and if that service doesn't do right, you fire them and you hire another one.
You have lots of issues with contracting.
As a, as a...
What are my biggest issues right now?
What are the ten hours we're on here?
Okay, so go back to my question, Commissioners Court, direct him, Zane, to direct their staff to clean our building?
Zane, you have a schedule for you people?
Is that a yes or a no question? That was a yes or no question? By current staff, we're not hiring somebody else, Pete, because we don't have the money in the budget to hire somebody else. It needs to be current staff. And Joe's not gonna do it.
Honestly, I don't remember if it was, I don't know. Captain, will we have a lot of custodial staff? I, I don't, in, in any other time, I, I don't know how to exactly...
I'm sorry, but if you're hired to clean, if you don't clean, there's the door, plain and simple.
That's right.
And you just replace somebody, that person does.
But she didn't quit. She quit, but then she came back.
Who's ever come back?
Not, not her supervisor, they, they're lying.
I'll be going, you're hard, just tell me. I'm here for, you know, I've quit out.
I know, I know, it's, I know.
Maybe, maybe we can... The rank law, you won't look at it. I hope you don't mind me, I won't starve, I, I think I'm here to help, God.
I understand, I understand, man, I apologize for, you know...
Well, he was put in a supervisor position, he got the...
I know, but they have, not, just speaking from what I see and not getting in for anybody or getting on anybody's side or anything, I know Zane, he's done a lot more than just doing this because the, being a supervisor, shouldn't have had to been out there and galette doing what he was doing out there and everything. So, he's not just doing his supervisory position here, and I'm not getting it for anybody.
I think my hands are dirty every day.
Yeah, he's a working supervisor.
Yes, and he actually goes out there and he does things over and beyond the common duty what he was hired to do in my eyes, I mean, and I appreciate it, he's okay with it. I touch base with him, so I know actually what he's doing and everything. Maybe there's just not enough staff to clean everything, but I do think that every department, like just say for an example, you know, the annex one, so we call it over there, should have a list, or I don't know if y'all, maybe y'all do, excuse me, okay, clean trash cans, do this, do this, do that.
There's a dry erase board with it?
Huh?
There's a dry erase board?
Okay, something like that, and then nobody, and nobody would have to tell them to do it as long as they did their job, they walked in and...
It's basic janitorial, sweep and mop and clean the restrooms, everything, it's not, it's not like we're asking them to clean the windows, clean the blinds, wipe the walls down, polish the silver, whatever. Basic cleaning, clean the restroom, sweep and mop. And like Luanne said, between the replacing of the floor and the restrooms, it's pushing over thirty thousand dollars. And you're not even gonna hell out, someone come in and clean, you know, the building, we're trying to upgrade.
The way I, the way I look at it, and I've always been like this, you know, I try to go head-on with somebody, you know? This he said, she said, is all a bunch of boo.
I agree.
And I'm tired of hearing that.
We're tired of it too. Because we're trying to put my mouth, but I'm not...
Everybody should get together and just get together and go ahead and go head-to-head with it and find out exactly what is going on.
Mr. Gower, who is my commissioner, told me I could not be there.
You had no business there.
Why?
Why are we, why are you there?
Why? It concerns our staff, it concerns our building, things that were, she claimed that we said about her and we, we need to discuss it.
I got a question, pretty matter, we already, what, I'm sorry, Mike, what other...
Zane, this happened a long time ago when Jim Allison was standing right there and he looked before and he said, "Y'all need to start taking along." Remember?
Exactly.
He said, "Y'all need to start taking along."
I understand.
I'll pull one out the window.
I try to get along with everybody, but anyways, that's...
Hire a professional cleaning tree, they come in after hours. So, there's no transfer of who said, she said, we said, you know, if you hire a professional cleaning service, they come in after everybody's gone. And they don't have to deal with the Commissioners Court or who's in the meeting.
Next question will be about the key.
Well, and, and, you know, we probably as length of officials wouldn't have a problem taking turns making sure that the building, someone, one of us is in the building. I mean, I can speak for this building.
But there's, there's a...
Because there's public records, there's like an attorney's office, I'm sure there's attorney-client privilege stuff. Okay.
I'm sorry, let's come back over, let's come back over here. Uh, look, nothing's gonna...
So, there's no action taken?
Nothing's gonna get done on here, man?
The only thing I want is to, Commissioners Court, to direct Zane to have someone to know.
Okay. On, on this whole issue, we'll go on to the last one, go ahead.
Hey, my question is this, you know, Mr. Yar made a comment about a human resource issue. As long as I've been a supervisor, anytime there's been an incident with an employee or something like that, there's some type of documentation that's put out to, to address the issue, what it is, what corrective action is taken and future remedy of anything at all. Was there anything like that done?
I'm pardon, that'd be a supervisor's question.
I thought I'm asking Zane.
Well, we started working all the time.
Well, we, we need to get, we need to get those issues done and then, again, we're providing the service. I don't think anybody needs to pick where or not they're gonna work, period. If they want to work, they should go ahead and go where it's supposed to go and do their job. Uh, if there's an issue with that, then, you know, we need to find a remedy to solve that situation. And it's almost done.
I, I mean, I want to assign duties and it has to be based on about I have to work with and our suppliers we have to work with and, uh, people gotta understand, if they got these assigned duties and it's seven hours, I can't have, can't have people say, "Come over, I need to do twenty-five block office upstairs, ours over here," you know, I need, I need all this stuff cleared out of my office today, you know?
It's a duty.
That throws in a monkey wrench in all this.
It is, it's, you know, and most of the time that's been beyond, that happens. Me and you have had this discussion, most of the time, I never knew what was going on with the custodials now, because there were, there's twenty people in this county giving them all directions.
You can't have a schedule, you can't need your schedule.
I'm not supposed to be the schedule supervisor, but basically bypassed.
I understand. Okay, we're moving on to item number seventeen.
Mr. Todd, I'm sorry, for the record, is there no action taken on that work?
No action. Discuss, consider act, status of back depository contract, wire transfer fees are being charged and need to be negotiated, cause, in a, out there, do you need to provide on that?
Basically, we have a bid from the bank, but we do not have a contract. And according to local government code, title four finances, subtitle B, county finances, chapter one sixteen depository for county public funds, subchapter B, establishment of depository, depository and subdepository contracts. Commissioners Court of the county shall select by the process provided by this subchapter, which is bidding, one of the banks in the county and enter a contract with each... one or more banks in the county, and enter a contract with each selected bank, the com, county's public funds. So it's been said by this Commissioner's Court that they run by the law, they do by the law, and the law says you need a contract, and we do not have one. Right now, every time I can cap the wire money out, because the bank makes its own, gives seven million dollars from the bank, it's a twenty dollar fine. Now, it may not be a whole lot to you right now, but every time I'm moving money, it's worth doing now, instead of looking into the five or six different funds that I have for outside investments, from making one transfer, and then within our office, we're having to do extra work to move those monies to where they need to be, so, I think we need to go back, present a contract, of course, Herb's not here, I gave him a copy of the contract that we had, this last go-round, two years ago, almost three years ago now, and we need to. He would look into it.
He never got back any?
No. We need, we need a contract, we needed to go shake that twenty dollar fee. We're already having to pay for checks now, how order checks, it's three, four hundred dollars, order checks, you know, house payable and payroll checks are probably the ones we order the most on there, uh, the other checks, it's not that often.
So you do need one, but you gave it to her, but he hasn't given it.
It's copy for lunch, if you're in, the local government code says you have to be, you need a contract.
When, when you have a class for contracts, how many responses?
Uh, we got none, and then you and Marble went to the National Bank, and negotiated the bid, and they signed the bid, but it's not a contract, not a contract. Yeah, they're supposed to collateralize us over a hundred percent, we need to make sure that's part of the contract.
Well, if you need one, we're gonna have to give you one, but you said, the one that you need is the one that you gave her.
It's just a copy from the one we had last time, so he kinda knows what to put in there and what to expect, so. I just need to kinda know what we were, where we were at with that, and he's not here, so I guess we just, we'll have an answer on you.
Do, are you okay with taking no action, I wanted to, he's here?
Yes.
No action on item number seventeen. Moving to item number eighteen, discuss, consider act, discuss, act, setting guidelines, setting guidelines, who is, on who is required, or required to participate in time clock plus time keeping program for the purpose of payroll costs, A, author, Commissioner do not.
We just basically have, I just need to make sure that everyone, I need to know who you are when required to clock in and out. But basically, to me, in my, uh, opinion, is if you are a public official, and a public official is, criteria for a public official is a term of office for two or more, a requirement for bond or oath, and statutory qualifications for office required. Whether you come to work or not, and you're considered a public official, you kinda have to pay until they remove you from office. If you're an employee of the county, you need to clock in and out, you need to be, uh, responsible for your time. It's sick vacation, is sick vacation and comp are approved on employees, employees that leave the county and qualify for unemployment, or eligible for unemployment, please elect officials or not. I just think that if you don't meet the qualifications of a public official, then you need to be clocking in and out.
Karen, do you have?
I happen to know, this is specifically directed, maybe not just at me, but that I am one of the individuals that she is speaking of, and I wanted to remind the court that, um, back in August of two thousand thirteen, on the twenty-sixth, we had this issue come before, and I'm not sure why it's being brought up again, I've, I've mentioned to by, what the, you know, um, I think, yes, everyone who's required to do time sheets is required to work through the, the time sheet system. I don't like it, I have my issues with it, uh, because all we have is problems with it, but that's beside the point. But, um, the specific item is, was discuss, approve, disapprove, time sheets for appointed officials supervised by Commissioner's Court, and a motion was made and seconded, that time sheets for appointed officials supervised by, supervised by Commissioner's Court do not have to do time sheets, the motion carried five to zero, so, we're bringing up an issue that's already been discussed, and I'm not sure why we, why we can't go, you know, we would have to, you would have to go back to that meeting, change the motion, change your action, and, you know, say, never mind, we don't mean that.
And there are other people.
I just wanted to bring that up.
There are other people that are not clocking in.
Okay.
You know, and we're pointing that towards you, I'm sorry, but you're not the only one.
Right, and that's fine, but I just wanted to make sure that that exclusion was in there when we talked about this.
They don't get paid by the hour, why should they have to clock in? They have a salary.
Well, nobody that's full-time gets paid by the hour, and how are you gonna have them accountable to come to work?
I guess you have to go by and check on them.
Well, not, what, what I, what I figured was, the appointed officials didn't have to do that, just like the elected officials didn't. How many do we have, Mike, Karen, Ronnie, and Dennis, appointed officials?
But they're not set by a term, Mike's set by a, Mike's term, ordered to stay attached, it's gonna end up in a term. The Dennis, like, or EMS guy, is basically an employee, he does not clock in or out. Karen is, the election administrator is appointed by Commissioner's Court, but she's also employed by the county, she's not set by a term, she, like Dennis, gonna be fired at any time, and I just, and it's almost to their benefit, because clocking in and out, you're getting comp time, if you're over thirty, forty hours, we're gonna pay you.
Oh, so you're gonna start giving us comp time?
Can I please finish?
No, I'm just thinking, I'm just, that, you said you're getting comp time, but I, I've never got comp time.
Okay, I don't know if you're, if you clock in and out.
But I was told I don't get comp time, because I'm salivating, you're paying me to do my job, whatever it takes.
You're clocking in and out, if you work over forty hours a week, then you will get comp time. Sick approved, disapproved, also, vacation does not start, until you've been with the county for a year. The elected officials, again, elected officials and appointed officials, and she's the only appointed official, because she's the only one that has a term. Basically, if you don't show up, we don't, it's not to pay. So we had other people besides Karen, who now are not clocking in or out, and I just need to make sure that Commissioner's Court is, is okay with that. I think they need to be clocking in and out, they need to be paid for the time that they work, compensated for their overtime if they work, later on. I think EMS is the only one that actually gets comp pay for comp time, but if they leave the county, then they have vacation, then comp they get.
Sure, so, so who, who are, who are, who right now is not clocking?
Uh, oh boy, Mike, Ronnie, Karen, and Dix.
And other employees.
Well, on the time clock plus, you mean, we have the, the three, Zane, Rose, Joe, Jesse, and the other Joe Hopkins, have no access to a computer, or to a punch, pen pad, in order to clock in, so we have to manually put in their.
I wonder about, uh, Sylvia, Alex, they are doing it on.
Alex, Alex, because he's asked, yeah, and this week is the week we are starting, all we're gonna accept is time clock plus. So everybody needs to be clocking in and out.
And I will tell y'all, payroll for today was a much simpler process with time clock plus.
Is it calculates your comp when you're having time. Karen, if you're having problems with your.
Probably are, because we're always calling you.
Well, you're not the only ones, don't feel bad, I mean, if, if you forget to clock in, you have to have override to do that, and, and people are calling you to override, and I don't, I know people are gonna forget.
Road Bridge, I know had a big problem last week, because they clocked in at six, you know, they were told to clock in at, after six, after forty-five minutes of the hour, and then it kicked, it kicked them back to six-thirty.
It's, it's, uh, set, it's set for the, oh, there is. If you clock in at six-thirty, if you clock at six forty-four, it clocks in at here as fifteen, is what it does. So if you clock in at six fifty-five, it's at the clocking at seven. It's for the rounding purposes for the comp time, but I've noticed here, the last few days, they've done a lot better at clocking in closer to seven.
Yeah, we clock in at five till now.
And it gives you seven minutes till afterwards, before it throws into, and that's your standard overtime, the way overtime is worked, but that's the easiest way to do it, with the rounding and everything, and I told them, if they're clocking at six forty-five, you know, they clock in at six forty-five.
Now, if they get six forty-five, they get comp time, which, you know, at first, it was like, yeah, you know, they're standing around getting comp time, but that's what it make, make you work, so then, six fifty-five, they all run in there, and some of them still don't remember all their PIN numbers and everything, makes them know they're after it, and they run up to me and say, hey, I'm not late, I just was too late, because I was late in the night, I went to work on it.
Yeah, and plus once the Gillette yard gets going, now, kinda cut down.
Yeah, they spark.
On that, they're not, they haven't been, so it's clocking at seven.
On this item, you have, uh, setting guidelines on who is required.
Right, so.
Who's gonna be the ones that are hashing it out, who's gonna set?
You got it, if, if any policy that the county sets, it comes from Commissioner's Court.
Well, I'm saying, it's not a committee that we're, that y'all are looking for us to set, to go ahead and do these, you want.
Guidelines, as in, if you're a public official, which is set by guidelines, through statute, a term of office, two or more years, a requirement for bond and oath, and statutory qualifications for office are required, if you're gonna set them to standards of a public official, what that term is, then that right there tells you who will be clocking in for a month or a year.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
No, that's fine, that's fine, oh, I just have one question as far as the, the, the clocking in, um, you know, and, and not the average hours, but I am the administrator for EMS, we don't close, we don't shut the doors at five o'clock, I'm responsible for that thing, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, now, is the county gonna pay me twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? Even when I'm not here, even on the weekends, they're attached to me at the phone, if there's a problem, they call me, there's no one else to call.
So in other words, are you gonna clock in every time you get on the phone and you're off for fifteen, twenty minutes, you're gonna cancel that name, or clock it in? How are you gonna do that, don't you say?
I clock in all the time.
Right.
I mean, that's, it's, and, and then we get into a whole nother deal of, you know, when we start this, we're gonna get into a whole nother thing of, of what's payable, what's not payable, what's comp time, what's not comp time, did they really call you? Did we really, where are we gonna end this? I mean, I was hired as a, you know, as a administrator for the EMS, to be paid a set salary, to make sure that the EMS functions and runs correctly, bottom line.
You're not supposed to be.
I, I don't, I don't, I mean, if, if, if I'm, if I'm a big enough boy to be in charge of those two ambulances running, and taking care of the whole public health and welfare of this county, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, if we do wrong, then let's, let's get on me, um, you know, I, I, I don't see the need in, in to be clocking in, because my team is never time off, I'm always connected to this, to this county, every day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If they call me and I don't answer the phone to take care of them, then I'm negligent by law, bottom line. If something happens, I have to drop what I'm doing and come to the county and take care of problems. So, uh, I mean, it, it's, it's, you know, I, I don't wanna say, I don't want this to sound bad, but you're getting me a lot cheaper now than you would if it's by the hour. I, I don't, don't, don't take that the wrong way, but, but my salary can triple quickly, doing it this way. And, and, you know, and, and not, not getting the lawyers out, and all that kinda stuff, but, there's a lot of stuff to back up the way EMS gets paid, and, because there's been a lot of abuse of EMS personnel over the years, and it's just, it, it works for the county's benefit this way than it does, because if I start talking in, then I become an hourly employee, and, it's all I got to say.
Thanks, Dennis, I appreciate it, the guys, we all wanna.
Can I say just one more thing?
Oh, sorry, Karen.
That's okay, she's asking for guidelines, well, I think she already got some guidelines on that, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were saying. I, I think she already got guidelines, on August the twenty-sixth of two thousand thirteen, the guidelines were that, uh, time sheets for, that appointed officials don't have to do time sheets. This is a time sheet system, why, why would it be any, any different with this time sheet versus our old time sheet? Was, because that wasn't the point of changing systems, right? The point was just to make your job easier and go to electronics, so, the, you know, the guideline was already set.
But you're not.
Everybody, well, but, but, by, I'm sorry, it's, this is not personal, but it, but you're making it personal. First of all, you're the HR director, so you should be the last one to try to override and, and do this, but, um, the, you set guidelines, so what she's trying to do is say, I don't care what you guys said, I want you, I'm just, this is my opinion, my personal opinion, is that she's saying, I don't care that y'all said they don't have to do time sheets, I think they should, so, you know.
And are there where there are people who are turning in time sheets currently, that are not clocking in? No, you're not.
No.
So how I can make this.
I, I'm not saying that, I said, I, what I said was that the guidelines were already set, appointed officials, and I, and she said all of the, elected officials.
You're not an elected official.
No, I said, you said elected officials don't have to, and that's good, but, but Commissioner's Court already said appointed officials.
You're not an appointed official, you're an employee.
I'm an appointed official.
You're, no, you're not, you don't meet the official guidelines, an official, public official has a term, you don't have a term.
I'm, uh, an appointed official, is what, that is my term, I can show you that.
So why do you have a problem clocking in?
I don't have a problem necessarily doing it, my point is that the Commissioner's Court set a guideline, they've set the rules, you don't like it, so you're trying to change it, that's, that's my only point.
I didn't like it, there are people that are not clocking in, and the time sheets currently turned in before, they're not clocking in, and if you take this directive straight to you, Karen, I'm sorry.
I'm letting this debate, as long as it's not a shouting match, because we.
Well, she is shouting.
When you go head to head, and you vent with people, you share up there, rather than just shutting them down. You shut people down, you don't get to talk about what's going on.
Okay, so can y'all make a decision, yes or no, I don't care either way, which way, and go to it, but, we have people that are not clocking in, that have turned in time sheets before, that need to be clocking in, we have people that are not, that don't meet the public official guidelines, Dennis is going to state his case, on why he doesn't feel like he need to be clocking in.
You don't think we should set some guidelines, or you think, leave it as is?
Me and Shelby were told, the only thing we need to know is when or not they'll be there.
Leave it like it is, but when they're gone, they need to report that they're gone.
Okay, and.
To the, to the, or to the time, do, somehow their time.
So, but if they're gone, how are we gonna pay them?
See, and that's the problem too, because the way the policy manual is written now, you have to be here for a year before you're eligible for five days of vacation, two years for ten days vacation, elected officials, and myself, as an appointed official by the district judges, are not subject to those requirements, as long as our office is open and operational during the posted hours that are in the policy of eight to five Monday through Friday, is another issue that's fixing to come before court, is office hours posted. The thing about it is, if you aren't keeping a time clock in the system, how are you gonna know if someone's eligible to be paid for a time, a day off, or two hours off? Like I said, now, you can't have vacation until you've been here a year, if you are clocking in and clocking out, and earning comp time, then your supervisor can allow you to take time off to use up that comp time, but we don't know if you're earning comp time if you're not working forty hours a week, and keeping a standardized record of your time, that's turned in for payroll purposes.
It really benefits them.
Except that the definition of salary also within our, our book is that we don't get comp time, we have to do our job. So we do our job, no matter if it takes sixty hours a week, or, or less, or whatever, but.
All, all employees in the county are on salary, except for part-time employees that are paid by the hours worked. Everybody's on salary, so that if that's the case, then nobody needs to keep record of their time, if it's based on salary.
And we're all appointed, and we say, I don't want you to share the points, we're all appointed, so.
And you, and you clock in and out.
I'm not eligible to, I'm not eligible for comp time, every time my phone rings, either nine, ten times a night, I can't clock in every nine, nine, ten times.
Right, but you're not eligible under state, as we call, uh, attack with that, discuss to make sure.
Anyway, it's, it's, it's a problem. Dennis and all our guys are doing, all the sheriff's officers are doing.
We talked about this. He can't make, he can't make this decision right now.
Thank you, sir.
He can sit down, and when he sit down, look at the way the pros and cons are going to look, he come with a, with a standard.
Well, that's what it says. It doesn't say to make a decision today, it's just saying, setting guidelines.
Okay, well, we, what, what I can do is go on our lister and ask them for guidelines on who's required your time sheets, and we'll bring it up again.
That's what you, that's what you're doing, Dennis?
That'll work.
There's a lot of good points given both ways, from both ways. It's just hard to make a decision right here or set it right here. It's good to hear both sides.
And, you know, and I agree with what Dennis said, and even, uh, Robert, you know, they're, they're twenty-four, seven, it doesn't, doesn't ever stop. I think there's, if you get on the lister, sort of, get sort of what they're doing.
I can answer that.
Then we'll go from there.
Okay. One more.
No, actually, on number eighteen, we should have a discussion. Uh, moving along to number nineteen, Discuss, Consider Act, Hiring King Harper to Do Janitorial Repairing in a Rannick Building of Two Hundred East Calvert. This is, even after all construction has been completed.
Yes, we talked about this before, and, uh.
Dennis, before you leave, can you start submitting a monthly report to the Commissioners' Court?
Yes, I can. I've never been asked to or told that I needed to do that.
Oh, if you would, please.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
We want to give them.
Oh, they want to give you that.
We had talked about this before, and, uh, got asked to wait until the construction was complete. They had completed the rest of it. They have completed the flooring, uh, so now we want to come back in, come in, clean the air ducts. On the janitorial staff, to dust all walls after the flooring installed. On those three, the tiles were outcleaning. It's not, you just have to come in and sweep it really well and mop it really well. It's not actually tile grout cleaning like you've learned, like you've had it for a while. Because I, we've been, I talked about that. I said it's brandy grout, we don't need it cleaned, cleaned. It just needs to be mopped and.
You just have to talk about the old tile that was already in the building, cleaning that grout?
I don't think so. We can, I don't think so. Well, we talked about the new flooring, about nothing to grout on that.
But since he specifically says.
Tile grout.
Grout grout, and the ceiling. Things like the hallways in the backside.
Have you talked, have you talked to them, said we would call to get these people on a monthly retainer?
I've tried calling him, and he didn't answer his phone, and I was leaving my office, so I didn't leave a message, but I can talk to him.
Did you move that for maybe for upcoming budget?
Okay.
We had done that two or three years ago and had two different bids on janitorial service.
And we actually have a jet in the budget for a janitorial service for one time cleaning of this building. It's in the budget.
Right, the, the floors got completed, completed, they got sealed, baseboards got all back put on.
No, we didn't want the baseboards, because we're going to paint. So, pointless in putting the baseboards back, because that's not part of the bid, for them to put the baseboards back. We're going to paint, and then we're going to have like the wooden type.
So, then we're not talking about painting now, until all construction.
No, we need to clean now, because some of the walls need to be painted and they're all dusted.
Who's going to paint?
That's the painter's job.
The painter's job is to do that. Construction.
Well, that ain't going to happen until May, and I really don't want to mess up on that, okay? Because we can't even get our building cleaned as it is.
How many rooms have to get painted?
Uh, we're doing the entire building.
We're going to clean it.
Some of the, some of the rooms are panel, so they won't require painting, but they would like to be dusted.
I'm just curious, but whenever, but the construction company, our construction company, when we go in there, if their house is completely spotless, no dust on any furniture, and when we walk out of that house, it's completely spotless.
Well, I know, and that wasn't done with the, with the tile people and.
But y'all were saying the tile was dirty, shouldn't that, that should have got cleaned by the flooring company.
Well, they, I mean, that should have. That wasn't part of the, the bid. It just stood installed before, so it was nothing that's part of the bid.
That's standard procedure, yeah. That's, when we install ceramic tile flooring, it's standard procedure, and I called them there, I mean, if I took home and I jumped my guys' blood, and anything's dirty, anything that grout lines are wrong, and I make a review of it, but then that's what kind of thing it is.
Right, right. So, anyways, we just like to have the building cleaned. They can come in and do it. The price, that's equal to December twelfth of two thousand thirteen, is still good. Uh, we can do all three, uh, basically, we need to go and clean.
Twenty-seven-nine is going to be to clean out the whole building, everything.
Yes, everything, from floor to ceiling, and desk.
And then in May, whenever the, whatever contractor comes in, it's not going to require a cleaning again.
Probably not.
They're going to, they're going to drape the doors, they're going to drape the other rooms, they won't, you know, because that's what you do, you drape everything not to get anything else dirty.
Well, I will say, just for comment purposes, Wilton's was very tacky and very sloppy with their entire job.
Yes.
When Tim Yanta came in, redid the bathrooms and everything else, he draped himself, he covered the floors, he did the next job.
Yeah, you could see the yellow grout that he made.
Yeah.
He did it. I would recommend him to anybody.
Yeah, he's good. What do y'all want to, do y'all want to go in?
We, we, then, I'll draw it, yeah.
So, my thing is out of my construction budget?
Yeah, I think there's enough in the right, so that one will be taken out of the construction budget. One has been made and seconded, both can either say aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
No, motion passes.
One more.
Three, I mean, what do you guys have to do?
Okay, I'll point out items of interest quickly. Page two, we have our liability, public officials liability, uh, insurance premiums that are due and payable this cycle. We have, in the first section, you'll notice three hundred ninety, two hundred thirty-seven dollars, and five hundred and twenty-eight dollars to TAC. That is for the Gillette Fire Department vehicles. They will reimburse the county for that premium. You'll also see the fifteen hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents to Task Client Services. That is our quarterly fee for the health reimbursement account. Uh, you will also see an additional seventeen hundred dollars to Kathy Chapman for review of the Tyler Technology Contract. So, that makes a total of thirty-nine hundred dollars we paid for outside legal fees for reviewing that contract.
For that one contract?
Yes. On page three, about a third of the way down is a payment to KWJP, which is Carnes Wilson Human Offrobation Department of seventy-eight thousand eighty dollars and seventy cents. That is the county's budgetary contribution towards the probation department's operations for year fourteen. In that same section, a little further down, you'll see two twenty-three hundred dollar expenditures to Bear County Medical Examiner's Office. That's for JP Porter Autopsies.
You know, I want to, the other day, reviewing these things, and I, and I talked to a woman, and I had a comment that, a concern that there's a lot of attorney fees now that are being CTY and accounting. And, uh, I was wondering if we had enough money to end up, if you need to pay for these outside attorneys, that, that any representation.
It's a quarter-appointed attorneys for individual defense.
But if, if, we do recoup some of that cost maybe, or no?
It's at the option of the court whether to assign those costs to the, well, the county absorbs a one-hundred percent, it varies per case.
But I just want y'all, I've noticed here lately, we have a, a, a rise in that. It's four hundred pops, after a while, four hundred pop ends up being a lot of money.
Well, and if you look a little higher on that same page, there's another payment to Kathy Chapman. The amount is seven thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. That is for quarter-appointed fees for, she was appointed as a defendant in the district court for a particular individual. But they have the option of submitting on a flat fee basis or an itemized invoice, and based on her time involved in that case, she submitted an itemized invoice that the district judge did approve for reimbursement. That case was also reassigned to another opponent, so we will have ongoing expenses for that particular case. You go to page four, under capital outlay, uh, payments that we're making as far as Two Hundred East Calvert this cycle are eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and ten cents. That includes the remodeling of all the bathrooms. Uh, there's also payments to Daily Spears Architects, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents for the parking lot, three thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars and seven cents for the roof project of the courthouse, which is considered Phase One B, and that is what the current application is for THC for the grant. Another payment for courthouse Phase One A to Daily Spears Architect for two thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Then we have three expenditures, four expenditures on Carnes County Jail project for three hundred twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eleven cents. You will notice a nominal payment of ten cents to Hail Mills. On a previous application, ten cents was omitted, and so we are making up that nominal fee in our payment this time. On page five, under the Sheriff's Department, uh, we have twenty thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars for law enforcement liability. That not only covers the Sheriff's Department, it covers the constables, it covers the juvenile probation officers, but it's just all expenses out of the one-line item. Further down, you'll notice the liability and auto physical damage coverage totaling twelve thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. That's for Sheriff's Department vehicles. Further down, at the bottom of their category, is expenditures equipping and purchasing new vehicles totaling thirty-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
The total of seven lives?
Yes. If you turn to page nine, to Road Bridge, out of this cycle, the total spent on, from the road, bond money is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. That's the last nine, and the first two on the next page, those are bond monies. Road Bridge Special, on page eleven, are premiums for liability and auto physical damage for the Road Bridge vehicles, not equipment, but vehicles, is eleven thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars. Total for this cycle is eight hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-six cents. We are still holding an invoice in our department awaiting installation of the audio visual equipment for this room. Does anybody know when installation is supposed to be complete? This invoice was dated December thirteenth, because we still don't have installation.
I hear something was saying grid word twenty-eight today, this evening, sometime. I've not been hearing, do you know anything about that?
Second, does it, all the papers say aye?